Okay, we are recording in live.
Thank you, Caitlin. Good evening, everyone. This, welcome to the virtual meeting of the Newburyport Historical Commission. This is Thursday and my notes still say the 25th of February, but that's wrong. It's the 10th of March. And so we'll opening, we'll open this up momentarily, just kind of stalling here briefly. So people have have a chance to join because we, a lot of attendees can't join until the meeting technically starts this. I'm referring out to the Zoom meeting. So while people are, might be joining in, I'll just point out that if you're not familiar, and by now you probably are, commissioners will have their audio enabled. And one member of the public at a time will be unmuted during public hearing periods, although I don't think we're going to have any tonight. We'll see. If we do have a public hearing period, I'll go over the rules about how to make yourself known to us that you wish to speak and what to do in that event and will involve unmuting yourself on your end. So why don't I get it? Go ahead with the attendance in alphabetical order, starting with Mr., okay, Mr. Conrad actually, I know he's absent. So we can strike him from the list. One second. So and Mr. Sundron, Mark Sundron is also absent. Mr. Christopher Fay, you're here?
I am here.
Okay, Mr. Peter McNamee.
Present.
Okay, great. And Joe Morgan?
Present.
Thank you. And the Chair Glimmer Chitz is here. So we just scraped up a quorum. And so we can legally conduct business and approve whatever might need to be approved. Just one second here. This, okay, so moving right along, the first item on the agenda is a request, there's requests received on that demolition delay, public hearing for nine Barton Street. So this is a fairly straightforward manner they've asked to be continued because they couldn't make it tonight. So is there a motion to continue that without prejudice? Someone like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion to continue without prejudice.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Seconded.
I will second it. This is Peter.
Okay, thank you, Peter. So the roll call, Chris Fay, your vote?
Yes.
Okay, Peter?
Yes.
Thank you, Joe Morgan?
Yes.
Okay, the chair is in agreement. So that will be Caitlin, you can note that that will be continued to our next meeting, which I believe is 3/24. Is that right?
March 24. 24. Yep.
Okay. Okay, moving right along, the other things are reviewing the advisory reports. Sometimes they're called advisor reports, historical reports, same thing. These are the reports that I draft based on the input you might, those of you, like you, I guess, were all here two weeks ago, where I took your input and combined that into a report for the planning board. And these are, I would, these are actually pretty important guidance for the planning board. So anyway, I hope you had a chance to review those. And what I, the procedure I've been following is I'll draft a report, come back to you all to, for your approval of it or any changes that you feel might be necessary. And if there are any, we can try to do them right here and now so we can move this right along. So the first one was 24 Centus Street. This was the house, the corner of center and middle. They were demolishing that, that rather decrepit rear thing. Yeah, thank you, Caitlin. There's the, the report. So may I ask, did anyone have anything that they felt should be altered in that? Or did you all kind of feel it was good to go? Any comments, anyone? Yeah, Chris?
I think it's good to go, but there's a slight typo on the second page.
Really?
So it's a
Yeah, I'm, oh, we lost you briefly, damn it. You, you still have that problem, Chris. If you can hear me, maybe you can stop your video or something so you don't need as much bandwidth so we can get your audio. All right, so we'll hold off, we'll stall a little bit so we can get, see if we can Okay, Chris, can you hear me?
Yeah.
You, you cut out for most of that. I was gonna suggest, can you want to try stopping your video to see if that improves the reliability of your audio signal? And yeah, all right, can you, we, you cut off almost right after typo on some, a second page or something like that.
So on page two, in that first paragraph after the bullet points?
Okay, I'm calling it up now. Let's see. Okay, let me get it here. Okay.
The end of the first sentence, it just says, says 19th century, comma, R, R historic.
Okay, hang on, my
Small thing, but
Come on, now my computer seems to want Okay, which paragraph was it now?
So the first paragraph after the bullet points on page two, see that?
Okay.
The current windows, it starts the current windows. If you go to the end of that first sentence, I see the word R, A, R, E twice, R, R historic.
With the current windows, but patient, you're quite right. I will fix that right here and now. Thank you. Any other corrections or changes? Could I there, Chris? Thank you. Okay, if not, is, would someone care to make a motion to remove the, the term draft from this and go ahead and publish it, so to speak?
Yes, I move that we accept the report as the draft and issue it as final to the planning board.
Okay, motion to prove it as, as with the minor change that Mr. Fay just gave us. Any, sir, a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, so motion to approve as amended. Okay, I'll go through the roll call. Chris Fay, your vote?
Yes.
Okay, Peter?
Yes.
Thank you, Joe Morgan?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I'll assent to that as well. So that passes. And we'll move to the second one was East Row condominiums. This is the, this was the one where they had the problem with the leaky roof. And there was the proposal to sort of cap those. They were generally referred to them as parapets. They're really the kind of upward extension of the firewalls up above the roof line. So how about on this one? Anyone spot anything? And Chris, since I don't see your video anymore, if you do have something, raise your hand. So I know you want to.
Yeah, no.
Okay, is there a motion to approve that one then as written?
I'll make that motion. This is Peter.
Okay, thank you. Any, is there a second?
Joe, you're up.
I'm gonna make you unmute yourself, Joe.
I'll, I'll second it.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, now we can.
I'm sorry, actually, I lost control of my screen here. I do have a couple of comments.
Oh, okay. So I guess we have to back up then. So we'll hold on that motion then that you have. Well, let me put it this way, Joe, did you, was there anything you wanted to change on the report?
Now we're talking about East Row, right?
Yes, we are.
I'm sorry. I think, yeah, this is annoying. I just have small technical difficulty, but I have driven by it a couple of times and I, I just wanted I to remind my fellow commissioners here that, you know, those stepped parapets, as we've called them, are very prominent. And they're actually somewhat of an iconic element right there as you look across the market square. The sightlines are very prominent as you come down Merrimack Street coming into Market Square. And we talked about it at the last meeting with the applicant about the the fact that the step parapet is actually not the original construction. Those step parapets were built on top of the original firewalls and then they were, as Tom Coulter John pointed out, that they were subsequently remediated in order to provide some additional water protection, which of course was, 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 has not functioned properly. And we, we mentioned that the, the preferable solution would be to rebuild the parapets. Or I think as the chair has noted, to take them down and to restore them to their pre 1977 configuration, which, which, which was the year where the additional step parapet was added on. And I, I, the reason why I'm bringing this up is I, I feel that there may be some risk here with the cladding. I visually, there, because they are so prominent and I, if, if the, I'd like to strongly recommend in the report. And I believe, I believe the chair has done this, that the, you know, restoring them to the pre 77 condition or rebuilding them properly as the step parapet as they exist with the proper flashings and capping and all of that. It's the correct solution. But if I would like to add that if the cladding is installed, that there is a, there's close attention preferably by, by an architect who reviews the materials in the field for comparison with the other, with the other stepped parapets adjacent, immediately adjacent for match and for consistency. I also have a question as to the aluminum coping that is proposed. When I look up at those, I, I would swear that there's a stone coping on those parapets. And I don't believe a bright aluminum parapet is going to be a proper match. And again, I'm only bringing this up because I, I feel that they're, they're very conspicuous, those, those step parapets. And they have, I think, started to take on the the, if, you know, if, if not the authentic, the authentic, real, you know, component, they're, they've, they've, they've taken on a historic.
People would miss them, right?
And what's that?
People would miss them.
Yeah, I, I think because they are so conspicuous that they've become quasi-historical, even though they're not of the original vintage.
Yeah.
So, and I think, and we've got one shot at this, or they do, if they get it wrong, then I don't know what happens. But I feel that there should be some follow-up on the planning board's part or our part, or somebody should be there to look at the materials. And I would suggest even, and this is done very frequently in architecture projects, that a small mock-up be provided to demonstrate in the field, the materials and the cope, in other words, the brick and the coping to, before you, before you put all of this in place, to do a small mock-up to show the city what it's going to look like. And so that we can sign off on it, or someone can sign off. I don't know what the procedure would be, who would actually do that. But that would be my recommendation.
Okay, hang on, taking some notes here. So the term, the aluminum, you're pointing about the aluminum versus stone on the top. What is that? The coping? Is that the correct term for that?
Yes, yes, it's that, it's the element that goes on top, which is a waterproofing element in most cases, because there's either flashing under it or the, in the case of the metal, it acts somewhat as a water flashing.
Yeah. And, um, what I seem to recall from the discussion back then, two weeks ago, was that they were, the aluminum was a bronze aluminum, wasn't going to be like, you know, a natural aluminum color.
I see, okay.
So, yeah, that, because I totally agree, like, that silver natural aluminum would be that, yeah, that would definitely be a no-go. And I think they understand that as well. They, as I said in my report, they appear to be showing some, you know, sensitivity to all the things you just said, Joe. Because I think we agree that it's an extremely visible spot. I mean, when you look at pictures of Newburyport photographs and even old photographs, because I spent some time looking through the snow collection, whatever, and markets, there's a lot of photos of Market Square, several of which include that East Row, which is how we knew about the, the lower firewall extensions in the first place. And, you know, it's an interesting challenge. And it comes up, it seems to come up more often than I like where you have to kind of thread that needle as to when you're not, you know, do you rebuild something that, you know, isn't, might, might depart from what is there or not. I, what's kind of tipping the scale in this place is that we do have some documentary evidence in the form of old photographs that, so we know what was there. You know, so let me start from a minute because I see Peter wants to have, share some wisdom.
Thank you, Chair. I, I think that Joe's recommendation for a mock-up actually makes a great deal of sense.
Okay.
It does, doesn't need to necessarily be, well, mock-ups are mock-ups. It's just a question of allowing us from the ground level to see what the effect is. And I do agree, while it may not be the, the original profile of those parapets, it's become part of the city skyline as the city was recreated and resurrected, as it were. So I think that's an important factor to have in this recommendation.
Okay, I'm looking at the report and I think I can make a fairly quick change to that final paragraph. So in the recommendations, right? That you see there. So the first paragraph basically says that, you know, the ideal solution would be to bring it back there. It was because not only for historical accuracy, actually, that's almost a minor point here. The, the major point is that we think, at least I think, and I think most Masons would agree, that would probably be the most, that the solution that would be most likely to last and be remain waterproof for a while, right? And because, well, without getting into more detail than that, then the second, the proposals and capital is not ideal. So that last sentence, why don't I say the pause all. Let me just think for a second. I'm thinking, and the NHC can agree that this alternate solution, why don't I change wood to might have only a small, a small adverse impact on the original historical structure. That we believe that actually, a I'll say a, leave that a demonstration mock-up would, or I can say that, let the, believe that the the planning board should request a demonstration mock-up. So we a all be assured that this is the case. Let me read it back to you guys in a sec. Okay, so that second paragraph, second sentence, the app kind of shown sensitivity, that's the same, but, right, so over the, the application, the applicant has shown sensitivity to the historical character of the structure in their choice of design and materials selected for their proposal, comma, and the NHC can agree that this alternate solution might have only a small adverse impact on the original historical structure. I'll say period. But, but we believe the planning board should request a demonstration mock-up, so we may all be assured that this is the case. Does that, Joe and Peter, is that sound like it would, is strong enough to get your point across?
I would, Glenn, I would be specific saying to review materials and color selection for the, for the veneer brick and coping. Just to make it abundantly clear, what we're trying to do here is to make sure that it matches other, other existing parapets.
Right. The, did you see that they had brought in the sample of what they plan to use to the planning office?
No, I, I, I haven't been to the planning office to see the samples.
Okay.
I think it'd be very important to see them in situ, and that's the purpose of them.
I see. Okay, let me make a slight revision then.
And that's, I, I agree with Joe on that in situ. So there's a difference between a mock-up on the ground and a mock-up above.
That's correct. I think seeing it from the ground in its final place up on the roof would be really very helpful. Then we can say for sure if we've got a match or not.
How about? I like that in situ, I'm going to add that one second. Okay, let me read you what I got now. But we believe the planning board should request a demonstration mock-up, comma, in situ, comma, so we may all be assured that the proposed cladding is a good match for the other parapets. Is that better?
Better, I would still request specific mention be made of the veneer, the veneer brick and coping materials. Yeah, so they can be reviewed. So that veneer brick and coping materials can be reviewed in comparison with other existing structures, or something like that, whatever.
Yep. Okay, that's fair enough. Okay, I'll read it now. But we believe the planning board should request a demonstration mock-up in C2. So we may all be assured that the proposed brick cladding and aluminum coping, I'll put the word material in, material, are a good match for the other parapets or to the other parapets should be.
Works for me.
Okay, do, is anyone, would you like me to read that one more time? Since you're not, you're not, you can't see it. I mean, I'll read it one more time. Starting from the applicant has shown sensitivity to the historical character of the structure in their choice of design and materials selected for their proposal. And the NHC can agree that this alternate solution might have only a small adverse impact on the original historical structure. But we believe the planning board should request a demonstration mock-up in C2. So we may all be assured that the proposed brick cladding and aluminum coping material are a good match to the other parapets. I almost want to say that I kind of said earlier that because it is such a prominent visible location, I almost want to, you know, kind of explain that. That's why, you know, if it seems like we're being excessive, I don't think we are, you know, it is because it's Okay, I'm gonna, I mean, I'm gonna editorially, I'm gonna add one more sentence, but you can tell me to strike it if you don't like it. I'm gonna say we feel that the prominence of this location drives makes this or, see, see how you like this. We feel that the, as a final sentence said at the end, after that good match to the other parapets, we feel that the prominence of this location makes this a requirement. Thoughts? Should include that? That's optional. I think that's too much. Because we did say about the, how, I don't think it's too much, frankly, but then again.
I think it's good to remind people again that it's
Yeah.
visible, it's a very visible site, yeah.
Okay, well, I'm good with that. Should we return to the, let me still a quick save there and go back to the, so I think, um, I think someone made a motion. Why don't we start over again? Is, is there, now it would be a motion to approve as amended?
Is there, I'll make that motion. We approve the advisory report for East Row as amended.
Okay, is there a second for that?
I'll second it, Peter.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Second, and Chris Fay, your vote on that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Peter McNamee?
Yes.
Thank you, Joe Morgan?
Yes.
And the chair is good at that. Okay, very good. Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate your comments. Very good, very helpful. Um, okay, moving on, 30 Winter Street, you probably recall this one. We had a lot of discussion about the, this was Eric Primack, I believe, was the applicant. He's been a few times. So he's well underway in his renovation. Actually, you may have noticed that if you buy that area, Chris, I think you're in, in the neighborhood. So you've probably noticed. At any rate, he had a, what he called a minor modification. Caitlin, do you have his thing handy? So basically, it is a fairly minor modification, no changes on the front elevation. He had to, he had to alter some window sizes on the sides and back to accommodate some interior things. I don't know if there was a either errors or, or things, things discovered, who knows, you know, sometimes you run into these things in, in construction. So if you can see that, he's, these changes are all in the sides and back. Why don't you go to the that actually had a sketches, Caitlin, please, starting with two. So this is the left side elevation. So this is on the uphill side of Winter Street. So these are two windows in the back. He's going from nine over six to six over six to change the height to be the height of the window. I think in this case it was a kitchen needed to do that for kitchen counters. Can you go to the next slide, please, Caitlin? This is the other side. Again, both, and both of these sides, you might recall, are very close to a budding structure. So frankly, it's going to be hard for anyone to even see these changes. But I shouldn't probably penalize too much. So he's changing from six over six bath window, same width, height from, same change, 54 inches to, to 46 inches. So identical change of 54 to 46, nine over six to six over six on that side. And finally, in the rear, he's changed those bedroom windows. It looks like they're slightly larger. So they're nine over six to six over six, similar to the ones elsewhere in the house, except for that one window on the left side there, one of the older parts of the structure that had to go to, from, from 906, nine over six to six over six there. So let's see, let me see if he's in attendance. Yes, Eric is, Eric, if you, you, would you like to address the commission here? You're talking, you're unable to, you know, to speak. So you can explain, you know, what, what went on here and why you need to make the changes. Well, there's one more before you speak, Eric, on Caitlin, slide five. This one, there was apparently an error in the drawings. It showed those little not lentils, but, yeah, I guess that's sort of lintel ornaments on the top of the first floor windows. The architect drew them on the top windows as well. But as you can see, the original house did not have those, the top of the window butted against the fascia, which is very common. So that he didn't, so he wanted to let this board know that if anywhere in the dock, the drawing had them shown on the second floor, but that was not the case. And he was, did not plan to add them. All right, so I'll be quiet now. Eric, did you want to say, tell, explain to us anything about your modifications?
I think you've covered it pretty well. The left side was for the kitchen windows, again, for a countertop. The back right is, is both the same rooms, both the same bathroom. So it's just, it's the back right that faces the alley and it's the back right that faces the rear. And that, that's, that's going to be a bathroom so that we change to slightly smaller windows. The bedroom, we actually didn't change the size. We just changed the configuration so that we had, so that the, the windows could open a little better and we had egress. Because we got, we got a little bit of question from the building inspector, because the egress on the side is pretty much non-existent. So we wanted to make sure that we had some openings in the rear. So we just made those nine, we just changed the configurations to nine over six. In essence, we just kind of juggled some windows around that we, that we had, you know, we said, oh, we'll put these there, then we can put these in the back and not, you know, waste windows and this will be fine. And it, it all worked out. So
I see.
You know.
And I did have one, I'm sorry.
As you said, if, if you guys have gone by and seen it, I'm sure you've seen, you know, vast improvement to the thing already.
The, and I think I did see that, and we did specify that, so all these windows, including whether they're nine over six or six over six, will have the 3D raised exterior millions as, as discussed and all that, right? They're basically all the same spec, yeah. Correct. Okay, that's, okay, that's good. So let me, anyone on the board have a question or concern that, where we have Mr. Primack here, we can address? Don't see any hands or frantic waving or any kind. Would, in that case, would any, and in this case, often the staff, I should say, will approve my, minor, what they call minor modifications. But in this case, because windows are a very sensitive topic and we did have, have quite a bit of discussion in this commission about these, the windows on this property, they asked us to weigh in on this. Is there a, a motion to approve the mon, this modification?
Yeah, I'll make that motion to approve the modifications.
Okay, that was Christopher Fay. Thanks, Chris.
Small modification. Small, small modification.
Yep, okay. Is that seconded?
Seconded.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Okay, I'll go through the roll call, Chris Faye?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Peter McMe?
Yes.
Thank you. Joe Morgan?
Yes.
Okay, and the chair will go along with that as well. So, um, so thank you, Eric, for coming and explaining that. And I had, did have an unrelated question, the interiors aren't our purview. I was just curious if you saved any of the antique woodwork or anything from the interior? Or I just wonder if that all got scrapped, or if any of that's being reused or anything?
No, we've got some beams in there, we're going to reuse a couple of things and as mantles. You know, I've got probably the floorboards, I'm probably going to end up giving up to northeast architectural, because you know, as, as we're going through the house, it's hard to patch in some of the things that we're doing, so, you know, I don't, I don't like to waste them. I, I'll, I'll either, we either try to repurpose some as, as, as maybe some open shelving, some accent pieces, things like that. But, you know, I've got a, I've got a few more pieces in there if if anybody's interested in, in something, they could certainly give me a shout to come by.
Okay, no, thanks for the offer. Okay, if anyone on the Preservation Trusts hears that, they might, who knows? Maybe I'll stop by, who knows, we'll see. Well, thank you, Eric. You're free to go and thanks for coming in.
Thanks, gentlemen. Good night.
Good night.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Okay. I'll just do one very quick update before we do the approvals of minutes, and that is Andrew Bernhardt. I think I mentioned the name last week, or excuse me, two weeks ago, he's not in attendance tonight. But anyway, his nomination to this board is in process. Caitlin, do you know if he's had his first vote by the city council yet?
I believe so. I believe he is going to play in development next week.
Okay.
I can confirm that for you.
The Planning and Development Subcommittee or Committee, or whatever it is?
Yeah.
Yep, okay, yeah, and that's, that's fairly common, like, most of you probably did that. And I'm going to try to try to do a better job of what we used to call IBM onboarding Andrew. And if I, you know, to, to get him up to speed as quickly as possible, as far as the ordinances, the secretary standards and all that, especially in his case, he doesn't have much background in architecture and that sort of thing. His main what mainly what he'll be bringing to the commission is a passion for preservation and a very sort of professional background. So I think I'm looking forward to his contributions to the commission. So, and if I, if I find and come up with anything that I think is useful for, I know we, you know, other new-ish members, you know, thinking like, you know, Joe and Peter mainly, then I'll be happy to share those. And who knows, maybe someday we'll be meeting in person, you know, things seem to be easing up slightly, you can go into City Hall without a mask now, right, Caitlin? And, and I have, have any of the boards been meeting in person yet, Caitlin?
No, they haven't, not yet.
Okay. All right, well, so that's the only update from the chair. So we can, I presume you had a opportunity to review the minutes that Gretchen sent out the other day from February twenty fourth. Is there a motion to approve those, or any, did anyone have any corrections or anything? No, okay, sounds, I see Chris shaking his head, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Faye. Thank you, Joe. Okay, your vote to Christopher Faye?
Yes.
Thank you. Joe, actually, Peter, back to me?
Yes.
Thank you, Joe Morgan?
Yes.
Thank you. And the chair says yes. Uh, okay, um, I think the only thing we have left is to adjourn and make it a relatively early night, unless someone has anything else they'd like to add. Not seeing anything, okay, so why don't we look for a motion to adjourn and we can call it a night?
I'll make that motion. This is Peter.
Okay, thank you, Peter, and seconded?
Seconded.
Thank you, Joe. So, one second here. Christopher Faye?
Yes.
Okay, Peter McMe?
Yes.
Joe Morgan?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and the chair. Well, that officially ends tonight's meeting of the new report Historical Commission. Thank you, commissioners, for your coming in and your time, and for anyone who's, I see our old friend Patricia Pecnic in the attendees. So thanks to her for attending as well, and all. To all, have a good night.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.